Good evening, welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for Central Unified. Today is Tuesday, May 28, 2024. The time is exactly 6:00 PM. We are here at the Central Unified School District District Office, now labeled Room 13.
of Trustees. If I can ask you to hold your comments as we get started, thank you. The time is now 7:00 PM. We have just reconvened from closed session. Trustee Cervantes joined us at 6:09 PM and to report out on a few items. On item E2, we had a motion by trustee Carrillo, a second by trustee Mailing, motion passed 7-0. On item E3, we had a motion by trustee Cervantes, a second by trustee Mailing, item passed 7-0. And finally, on item E6, we had a denial of claim number RMA-002250. We had a motion by trustee Carrillo, a second by trustee Cervantes, item passed 7-0. And if I can ask Vice President Carrillo to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand. Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I now invite up Senior Lazo to come and share with us our community engagement information.
Good evening. If you wish to address the board, please call 559-276-3150 or fill out a request form provided on the table near the entrance and submit it to the clerk of the board prior to the meeting. If you wish to speak on an item on the agenda, please do so when that item is called. If you wish to speak on an item not on the agenda, you may speak during the public comment section of the agenda. Si desea dirigirse a la mesa directiva, llame al número 559-276-3150 o complete un formulario de solicitud provisto en la mesa cerca de la entrada y preséntelo al secretario de la mesa directiva antes de la reunión. Se permitirán comentarios públicos relacionados con los temas de la agenda cuando se llame el tema. Los comentarios públicos sobre un tema que no está en la agenda se permitirán durante la sección de comentarios públicos de la agenda. The district welcomes other language speakers to the board meetings. Anyone planning to attend and needing an interpreter for a language other than Spanish should call 559-274-4700, extension 10150 by noon on the Friday preceding the board meeting or at least 48 hours in advance of the meeting so arrangements can be made for an interpreter. El distrito da la bienvenida a las personas que hablan otros idiomas a las reuniones de la mesa directiva. Cualquier persona que planifique asistir y necesite un intérprete para un idioma que no sea español, llame al 559-274-4700, extensión 10150 el viernes antes de la reunión y antes de mediodía, o por lo menos 48 horas antes de la reunión para poder hacer los arreglos para la interpretación.
Gracias. Thank you so much. Next, we invite our partners for their presentations. If I may invite up Laura Bolton, CUTA president, to join us in the front. President Bolton, if you'd like to share any comments with us.
Guess I'm just in time. I actually don't have any comments prepared for tonight. But again, thank you for having us on the agenda. I always appreciate this time, and when there is something for me to share, I will definitely make sure to do that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we invite up our California Schools Employees Association president, Angie Gary.
Excuse me, Nina. Just like Laura, I don't have anything to say tonight. I don't have anything to say, but we appreciate the time and what you need to talk. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you. Next, we turn to our superintendent and/or board communications.
Thank you. I am pleased to report to you that both River Bluff Elementary and Rio Vista Middle School were notified last week that they have been selected as Educational Results Partnership's 2023 Honor Roll List of California's Top Performing Schools. And I see Principal Fink in the audience, so thank you so much. This is the ninth year that ERP, Educational Results Partnership, has completed this honor roll list. It recognizes top public schools, school districts, and charter schools in California that have outperformed their peers in closing achievement gaps, particularly among higher poverty or historically disadvantaged student populations. And they pulled that data over a four-year span of time, so we're excited to celebrate both of the groups of students at that school and now that have moved on and their staff. This weekend was busy. You may have seen via social media or the news. We had our Central East High School and some central high school track athletes, as well as our softball team participating in the championship events. Our softball team from Central East, I think I saw Principal Edmonds in the group here, fought hard. They had a great game. They came in second for it, and they made their way there and earned a place not only in the finals, but quite a few accolades and attention in their field as well. And in track and field, we had some great competition as well, so you'll be seeing some highlights from our high jump, triple jump, discus, relay teams, shot put, quite a few different events that were pretty incredible placing by our students. Our boys team did end fourth in state, and the competition this year, again, quite fierce. Graduations, I can't believe I'm saying this, but graduations are right around the corner, so we want to congratulate all the senior class. You should have each received a calendar invite to each of the graduations, as well as a printout from our media guru Maria. And gowns will be worn, just as a reminder, for each of the ceremonies. You can certainly wear your college colors as well as you would like. Anita has ordered for you a new stole, a trustee stole for each of you. And now that we have multiple high schools of different school colors, we had to make sure you all have a fair and right in the middle in terms of color. So, we've got one for you this time. They do start Wednesday, or excuse me, Monday, the 10th, then we'll have board meeting on the 11th, and then we also have them on Wednesday and Thursday. And please notice that we'll start at 5:30 at the Performing Arts Center, and then each of the evening ones will start at 8 o'clock at Coliseum Stadium. And that's all for this evening.
Thank you, Superintendent Davis. Any other comments or communications from the board at this time? And with that, we turn to comments from the public. So, we invite any comments from the public on items that are not on the agenda. Clerk Krefan?
Trustee's saying I don't have any unscheduled comments at this time.
Ms. Lopez, do we give enough time for our community viewing at home?
Thirty seconds have passed. We have no callers.
Thank you. So, that we turn to our consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Carrillo, we have a second by trustee Solis. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining. Motion carries 7-0. We next move on to our action item, our first action item being student discipline case, case number 2324012. The administration is recommending the board approve the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Cervantes, a second by trustee Krefan. Those in favor...
Sellers.
Sellers, sorry. My apologies. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining. Motion carries 7-0. We next turn to adopt attendance boundaries. Superintendent Davis.
Thank you. This item returns from the last meeting with all of the same attachments that you had to view when it came to as an information item. There are two additional resources that were attached as a final attachment that you will see on it for some new proposed maps. Assistant Superintendent Iqbal, any comments from you?
No comments.
No comments.
Okay, so we're available. Should there be any questions, want to turn it over to you to have discussion as needed.
Thank you. We'll take some comments from the public. Clerk Kerfond?
Thank you, President Singh. We have quite a few comments on this item tonight, so if someone is in the overflow room and you hear your name called, I'll call out a few names, just make sure you make your way out here. And also, because we have some, quite a few comments, if you hear us call your time, please be respectful of others and only use your allotted three minutes. Thank you. And with that, I'd like to call up Daniel Gray, and then on deck is Teri Ann Kazarian. And Dr. Gray, you have three minutes.
Okay, hi, thank you. Good evening. Thanks for hearing me tonight. I'd like to specifically address the issues around the boundaries as it relates to the high schools in particular. I'd like to first voice my support for option A, as I think I share the support with many of the community members who responded to the survey. I wanted to just look back at the process of how we arrived here. So as I understand it, we began this process months ago, and the board hired a company to come in and actually redraw boundaries to address some particular issues related to boundaries over population, distribution of services, things like that. Company was hired and approved by this board to draw those boundaries. And as I understand it, the boundaries were drawn. They brought forth some options, and you actually voted on the top five, which were the top five that were presented to the public. Once those boundaries were brought to the public, then we met in multiple different locations to voice our concerns and talk about which, what we supported, what we did not support, and come up with solutions. And then there was a survey sent out, and we had an overwhelming response to that survey. I think over 50% of the respondents were in favor of option A. The next closest was 20%. My concern comes with what followed there. What followed that outpouring of support for option A was in the development, I believe, of a subcommittee now, which consisted of only three board members, which was just under the level that would actually allow for public comment, if I understand that right. And that seems a little bit sneaky, if I can say that, if that's okay to say, but we had all of this development, all of this money spent, and all of these agreements made to have a company come in and design borders for where our children should go to school. We had an outpouring of community support for an option. And then we had a subcommittee that now has proposed a new zoning option, which is, I believe, option F. And there's been no outreach to the community. I believe it was posted on the website last week, but there's been no public comment for that. There was, this was not drawn up that I know of by the company that was hired by the district. And that's a big concern of mine, that's being voted on tonight as one of the options. And that seems wrong to me, that we should be voting on options that were presented to the public with input from the public, because after all, it's our children that are in these schools. So I'd like to just again urge you all to consider the options that were presented to the public with public opinion before you vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next will be Teri Ann Kazarian and Andrea Miller. You're on deck.
Hi, everybody. My name's Teri Ann Kazarian. I'm a product of Central Unified School District. I went to Houghton-Corley Elementary School, Central High School East Campus, and now my children attend Liddell Elementary School. So you might say I bleed black and orange through my blood. My father is also a school board member in the 90s, Von Kazarian. And so I know how important these decisions are for you all. I know how it weighs on you, how you think about them, talk about them, get approached while you're coaching a sport by a parent, asking you to have some time to talk about them. And so I appreciate that. And I know boundaries is a very difficult decision for every school district to make and for Central Unified to do so with high schools is a very big decision. And so I want to share as a parent and as alumni of this district, my concerns about the proposal and the way that we've been presented as a community, these options to provide input in. We were given no real information about transportation, how it impacts every community if they went to the different high schools based on the different proposals. Living in Liddell Boundary, I have no idea what my young elementary school children would have to get on, what time they'd have to get on the bus if they went to Central West Campus, Central East Campus, or Justin Garza. I only have my own logic to presume the answer to that question. And I think it's really hard for families to provide input on such an important decision without critical transportation information. So I would ask that you consider holding off on making a decision until you provided that information to families on all the options, so we can provide intelligent input so that you know what we're thinking when we're talking about the logistics of how our kids are going to get to school, how we're going to help them get to school if they miss a bus, and then also with families who have kids who are going elementary, middle, and high school, what real impacts that has on them. That's a really important issue. Low attendance means low performance. And overall, I'm really concerned that this decision is going to create a lot of apathy in our student body, as well as in our parents. Some of the proposals do not really consider maintaining student body communities, which is really important. Our kids want to go to school with their friends. Our kids want to go to school and be able to participate in activities they started in middle school all the way into high school. That's what they're worried about. That's what our families are worried about, their financial investments and some things like cheer programs, high schools, that begins at middle school and even at elementary school. It doesn't just start at high school. It starts early on, and we want it to start early on, right? We want kids to be invested in these activities because it makes parents invested in our schools, and it makes kids happy and want to go to school. We want them to go to school, right? So what I would ask is that when you are making a decision, you do think about community, an investment in the community that parents and families are making when making an ultimate decision about boundaries. So to share--
Thank you, Ms. Kazarian.
Can I, can I just say I am in support of option A for the secondary and option four for elementary school? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next comment will be Andrea Miller. And Andrea Gray, you're on deck.
Hi, my name is Andrea Miller, and my family has been part of Central Unified since 2011. My son will be graduating from Justin Garza in just a couple of weeks, and I have a fifth grader at Liddell. My son was a fourth grader at Liddell when he decided he wanted to join the band, and his instrument would be trombone. He is currently, in his last couple of weeks, in the Garza Band. He started at Garza as a sophomore, the very first year the school opened, and joined their band. I had never been a band mom before, but I was ready to take on the role. A small group of band parents formed together and with almost nothing helped build up our band program, along with our amazing band director, Mr. Tinkle. We put a lot of our own time, sweat, and money into making the band a success for the students. But personally, for me, my efforts were not only for my son in the band, it was for my fifth grade daughter, who also plays trombone, just like her big brother. She has been looking forward to being a trombone player in the Garza Band, just like her brother. She has been there with me volunteering and is fully a part of what we call our band family. The relationships and community we have formed these past few years are very special to our family, and I hope you will consider this when making your decision.
Thank you. Our next comment is Andrea Gray, and Jeanette Wolf is on deck.
Okay, I'm also here about the boundaries, also in favor of option A. And there was a rumor that I heard about the fact that there are some of us in our area that only want to go to the shiny, brand-new school. And I'd like to expel that because my daughter is also going to be graduating from Garza in just a couple of weeks. She's been there since the sophomore year when they first opened, when basically Garza had nothing, okay? There was, this was a big decision for her. She actually agonized over the decision because of volleyball. She plays volleyball. We had just come off a year of COVID where there was no sports, and now she was asked, does she go to Garza or East, where at East she gets to play volleyball on a varsity team. At Garza, not only did they not have varsity sports, they also did not, were not part of a league. So she did sacrifice by going to Garza and was not able to, she was playing volleyball, but only scrimmages they found here and there. Also, the volleyball courts were not completed at Garza when she started, so she was at Glacier doing volleyball practice. Well, Glacier had their own volleyball team, so this did not occur after school. As parents, we had to take our kids at 5 and pick them up at 7. And none of our kids, because there were only freshmen and sophomores, none of our kids were driving. So that meant all the parents were driving their kids to Glacier to do this. Again, there were no volleyball courts, so we couldn't even hold tournaments or anything. It was just scrimmages. Additionally, there were no, there were no desks in the classroom. They took the high-top tables from the mall area, which was the cafeteria area, and they put it in the classroom. There were no books when they started. I contacted multiple administrators. I also contacted Ms. Correa about the fact that there were no books. And Ms. Correa asked me, which class is she missing her books? And I said, all of them, because that was the case. The enclosure was not complete for the mall area where they were to eat lunch, so at 105 degrees, they were eating lunch with nowhere to sit in 105 degrees. So now, fast forward to her junior year, her junior year, still the volleyball courts are not done. She is still practicing at Glacier. Then halfway through the season, volleyball courts are done. We get to finally have our first home game, and all of the parents purchased all of the snack bar items that were sold there. So again, going to Garza was a sacrifice. There was a lot of growing pains that occurred with that. As a family, my daughter and our entire family, we have put in effort, time, and money into growing Garza where it's at, which is still not complete. But we've put a lot of effort into growing it, and so for us, option A means our younger kids, I have a kid in sixth grade at Liddell, now get to reap the benefits that we put in as a family investing in Garza. And so I do hope that you vote for option A.
Thank you. Our next comment is from Jeanette Wolf, and Cindy Bauer is on deck.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for listening to me and taking the time. I know I've reached out to each one of you guys and sent emails. I am also for option A for Justin Garza. I feel like it is the most, least disruptive to my children and to families that I know. We have always had the plan that our area, and I'm not trying to be like, oh, North Fresno gets to go to the new shiny school, because I don't believe that, because I've put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears, like a lot of these other parents. I have countless hours that I volunteer there, trying to rebuild this, the football program, and bring it up to par. I am also very involved with track. I've volunteered in all the elementary schools. I'm very hands-on with my kids. And my, my dream or goal was always for my kids to go to the nearest high school, which that was always the plan when it was designed. We were always supposed to feed right in there after Rio Vista, and now I have concerns with transportation. So you have families that have multiple working parents. If we're supposed to transport either to Central High or to Central East, how, how does that impact us? Okay, so we already have a bus shortage. There's no room for more buses at the bus depot. We had issues with track where last year, our kids were having to leave school at 10:30, missing valuable class time because of the bus shortage to get them to the school where they would compete, and they wouldn't compete until after 3, 3:30. So that's a huge concern for mine, because I want you guys to think about not only the cost of transporting kids to further schools, but to kind of think about, like us parents that have to drive kids, or if your kid's sick, we have to, you know, take off from work or get over there. And there are so many other concerns, sorry, I know I'm rambling, but there's a lot of other concerns on social, mental, and I feel like that has not yet been discussed at all. A lot of these kids, like I have indicated, they're very tight-knit. Our community is very tight, and I'm a firm believer of keeping these kids together, and they've played sports together, they've done band, they've done chess club, like my son, he's a big on chess club. And I really would like to keep them together and go on to Justin Garza. Sorry, I'm watching the clock. But, so along with the financial aspect of it, I just feel like we need to think about or prolong this and hold off on this vote, so we can do more research and bring in a psychologist to think, how will this impact these kids socially, emotionally, and mentally? I think that's something we have not talked about or brought up in a meeting like this. So thank you for your time, and I'll let you move on to the next. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next comment is from Cindy Bauer.
Thank you, President Singh and Board of Trustees, for being here tonight, for listening to us. I know the weight of the world's on your shoulders, and I wouldn't trade places with you for all the money in the world, I guess. But if I had all the money in the world, then I could just build a fourth school, so. I know you got my lengthy email, so I'm not going to go into a lot of that. I really don't know what magic words I could say up here that would convey the right message, so I guess I'm just going to tell the story behind the numbers and percentages and lines on a map and everything, because that's kind of what it feels like, that, oh, this friend lives over here, well, then that means we can't give them a ride to band anymore, or I just don't know what's going to happen, but that's why it's really scary. It just feels especially punitive to kids who are eighth graders right now, and even some of the seventh graders. The doors being slammed in their face right as they're about to embark on this journey of high school. It's introducing uncertainty at a time in their lives when they so desperately need security and continuity. I feel like younger students have a chance to adjust. Older students are getting to be grandfathered in and get to stay wherever they're at now. And this just doesn't affect Justin Garza, but of course, kids at East, kids at Central, every one of our kids. Again, this specific cohort, I feel, was the maybe most dramatically affected by COVID, sort of, right? As they were on the cusp of becoming children into preteens, we, you know, were all locked away without peer interactions. And I feel like they haven't really fully recovered yet, but it's getting there, and I just feel like this is going to be another significant blow to their mental health, because, I mean, kids this age, their whole identity is usually tied into their friend groups, which come from the sports they're in, band, the activities that they do. And that's not true for every kid, but that's just kind of where they're at right now mentally. So whatever extracurricular activity they're passionate about, you have to understand that it's already been growing for a while through middle school, and it's not that we want to go to the shiny new school, as some people have said. It's because it's the pathway we've been on all along, and it's like going down a slide, and then all of a sudden, you're just veering off. It's going to just break up a lot of established friend groups, I think, and families and friends that have been connected for years. I feel like what will happen is people will get transfers and some people won't, and then it's just going to be a break in the community. So--
Thank you, Ms. Bauer.
Thank you. I respectfully ask the board consider extending grandfathering to the sophomore level as well.
Thank you. And our next comment is from Brandon Sisk.
I want to thank the board for taking the time to listen to us. It's been a long conversation. Frankly, though, not long enough. There's still much more that needs to be considered. To give you an idea, I was talking with a friend of mine who has a kid in the closed Unified School District. They had to make a similar decision. They started that process much earlier, and it affected the school year, the 2025-2026 school year. So they gave the community much more time to provide input, and I think that that's input that is vital for you all to make a decision. Like was stated earlier today, at no point have I heard any information about busing brought up to you all. And so I think that the consulting firm that you all have been working with has not done you justice, has not provided you as much information as you need to make, as informed a decision as you need to make, that impacts the lives of the children in our, in our community for the next 10 years. I do want to express support for options four and A. If a decision does have to be made tonight, those are the, the boundaries that I would choose. Those are the boundaries that reflect the hard work that my neighbors, whose kids have suffered through Justin Garza in its growing phase, have put in a lot of money, time, to make that school what it is today, who will continue to see it grow through their, their next children, that they will see those things fruitful benefits for the kids that come after them. It also enables parents who are potentially otherwise bused from the Shields and Brawley area to not have a logistical nightmare-- to not have a logistical nightmare of kids who are going to be, um, you know, potentially trying to be involved in extracurricular activities, and then their parents are picking them up at, you know, seven, eight at night, driving them all the way back to the Shields and Brawley area. It's, uh, just not tenable, it's not sustainable. And it doesn't give those kids a fair shot at being involved, uh, like kids who are in the immediate area are, are able to. Won't take up any more of your time. I will, uh, implore you to delay this vote, uh, and make it, uh, applicable to the 25, 26 school year. Thank you.
Uh, President Singh, I don't have any other comments at this time.
Do we have anyone online?
We have no callers.
So I'm going to just kind of share, share a few comments, just a little bit about sort of the, um, process. And I also want to, uh, both acknowledge and also answer some, some of the questions that, that, that were raised. So our entire community does have at least the most accurate information. So I do want to say, and I appreciate Mr. Sisk's comments, um, to say at the outskirts that, that the boundary discussion is for the 25, 26 school year. So, so just not for the, uh, immediately upcoming school year, it would be for the following school year. The, the reason, and, and there's two parts that I have to center on this. The, one of the major reasons we're having this boundary conversations is, is for, is for two parts. One is for the, um, we have a new school coming online, in terms of an elementary school at Shields and Brawley. And our, and our second component that has to also be weighed in is, at Central High School, uh, our enrollment had been declining for, for the last number of years. There was an earlier decision at this, uh, but by, by the previous board in terms of what our boundaries currently look like. And the idea at that time was for Central High School to be the school of choice. For many different reasons, school, parents, students, and, and community members did not choose to go to that school. And for many of the, many of the parents in this room and others that we have heard from, they have long kind of shared what have been the populational pressures at the different schools, especially at Garza, in terms of, uh, not having enough students go to Central High has had a huge impact specifically at Central East and, and at Garza. When we set out in this process, it was really to, um, with those two kind of key questions, to really look at both our policies and really cent, centering our guiding principles, making sure to assure the equity and access, coupled with our belief in, in excellence and high expectations. This process, and I'll share from my point of view, I think you're right, uh, there was comments that could have been longer. We did have four town hall meetings at three of our different, uh, middle schools. And, and, and we, in, in order to make sure that we were ax, providing access for as number of, uh, the largest number of people possible, we also opened that up at Bio Elementary School. Our, our district utilized a company to provide four early draft, or, uh, four early draft maps. In terms of a best process, it was my understanding that these would always be sort of part of the conversation. That's why we solicited community input and actually had communities submit their, uh, members submit their own maps. And start a conversation, they absolutely did. The idea for a, uh, an advisory group was, um, absolutely sort of done in the public. Initially, we had even talked about potentially even having a session, but the, the sort of, the, the votes on the board ultimately were to have an advisory group. So I'm going to talk a little bit, a little bit about that. The idea for the advisory group was to absolutely listen to the community. We had at least nine submissions, uh, in terms of the different maps that were proposed to us. We knew that some of the maps that were proposed to us, they did not have a dynamic program where they would be able to see in real time if those maps were valid or invalid. So we took that as, the community is telling us what the spirit of the changes that they would like to see to the maps, rather than specifically it had to be this particular street or that street. And it was actually, those were absolutely the conversations that we had. We initially looked at Map A to see if there was any, really any feasible way to even move that in terms of what the populational pressures were. As we saw the map, we did not think that we were able to actually relieve the pressure from the different, different other schools as, as stated. And even in terms of the number of the comments, you can see that Map Four came out of that conversation. So there is, seems to be, uh, a liking towards elementary Map Four, which came out of that advisory group. Although, um, at least those that publicly commented here, uh, a little bit, not, not so about the opinion about, uh, the high school Map F that came out of that conversation. But, but for us, we had to look at a couple of different things. So one is, when we received the community maps, it was clear that the Liddell Annex was not something well-liked. And so that was a conversation that ultimately we had, uh, absolutely about transportation, about equity, to making sure that our families could get to schools most efficiently, especially in terms of attendance. And so that was where Option Four came out to relieve pressure, especially from Herndon, Barstow, and Harvest Elementary, which are already at or above capacity. And we were, and key for us was incorporating, for instance, uh, the Gunstream suggestion, which was to take on, uh, the kind of section between Spruce even, even lower to Herndon, to make sure our numbers at, uh, Liddell were, were viable as we saw our utilization numbers decreasing at Liddell. We appreciated the Wagner suggestion in our conversations to redo parts of River Bluff, as well as, uh, the Ranger, uh, suggestion in terms of extending Shields and Barstow towards the 99. To the best we could with the elementary school map, we've tried to incorporate all the different suggestions to, to, to bring, bring folks in. Again, we started with Map A in terms of, uh, what we saw is this is a unique and historic opportunity. And I think the comments on here really make me feel good, because to, to hear the community unite about how important it is for students that are going to junior high to go to high school together. That is currently not the case at Glacier Point. How, in our current situation, half the kids are being split up. About 40% are, are going to Garza, and 60% are going to Central East. That same opportunity for them to be together is something that we want in all of our schools. And that was why it was really important for us to align our middle schools with our high schools, so that the Rio students would be together in high school as well. The LCAP students would be together in high school, and the GP students would be together in high school as well. Again, this really kind of speaks to, uh, talking to me and speaking for myself, and, and at least as, as a member of that advisory group, what was sort of our values in terms of, here's a historic opportunity to, to correct, um, and make sure that everybody has those opportunities to, to stay together. What Map F did do is create two schools that had more even populations that would relieve pressure, and it would best increase the numbers at Central High. The reason we, we worked with Map E, uh, from Map E to a Map F was because we saw that Map E had numbers at LCAP that were not going to make that school sustainable in the long run. The numbers were way too small, creating huge pressures, especially at Rio Vista and, and Glacier. Again, I'm going to speak for myself now individually. Um, Map F and Option, uh, Map F and Option Four ultimately is what brings all of our students together. It provides an equal distribution of our resources, especially looking at our unduplicated count. The fact is, and this is part of our history, even when we talk about transportation issues, and, and there are some, is that this board inherited decisions made by previous boards to build two high schools less than two and a half miles away together. So any way we cut it, these, this was not in the best interest of the district when that decision was ma, made. But that's, but that's where the schools are, and that's what we're working with. I think, uh, we've had conversations, we just received a new community grant in terms of what could be our, our resource distribution, what, what are new opportunities, FTEs, and, and ways to make sure that we're providing, um, an equitable, uh, access with high expectations and, and, and a belief in excellence at all of our schools. So that's something I'm definitely, uh, committed to, and, and I just wanted to kind of share that, um, overall.
President Singh, I would like to make a motion to approve Option Four for elementary school and Option F for the aligned, uh, high school and middle school.
We have a motion. Trustee Solis.
Are you going to be the last word on what happened here? Or are you going to give other board members this chance to comment on it?
I, I saw your hand, I called you.
Okay. Well, I have a comment before that we consider the motion.
We, we, we have a motion.
I'll make a second, so we can continue discussion.
We have a motion and a second by trustee Sellers.
Repeat the motion.
The mo, can you repeat the motion, trustee Kerfann?
Thank you. The motion was to approve Option Four for the elementary school and Option F for the high school and the aligned middle school pattern for Option F.
Should we take a roll call vote?
Well, I think there's a request for discussion, so now we would have the discussion since there was a motion made before any discussion could be held by the board.
So, so we'll open it to discussion first. Trustee Solis.
Heard a lot of things today. Got some emails, some letters, whatnot. To, to the community, the concern about process? I won't waste our time today about that. I spoke to the process at the last board meeting. I haven't seen anything that changed my mind pertaining to the process. But that's water under the bridge right now. I would support Option A, because to be totally truthful to the community, there is no perfect map that I've seen. Each map displays different concerns to the people that are using it, whether that's elementary, middle school, or high school. So for you in the community that seem to think that you have the perfect map, let me warn you, there is no perfect map. So all you can do is pick a map that addresses the majority of your concerns. Map A, from what I've seen, the majority of the public that contacted me like Map A, they're speaking in favor of Map A. One of the, uh, uh, good points about that is the community had a chance to look at Map A in the town hall meetings, to give their input on it, before this board had decided to draw up their own maps. Okay? I will caution the, the people that are supporting Prop A. One of the downside this brings up that will be addressed later down the road is dividing up resources. And for some of the people that are, uh, opponents of Prop A, be sure you know that's what you're signing up for. And I got a feeling when, once we get down the road for dividing up resources, you may not be that happy with A. But just for you know, I don't want anyone to go in this saying Prop A, I mean, uh, Position A or Map A is going to solve all the resources. It's not. But also, some of the other maps that I've seen here that are, uh, up for being, uh, voted on right now, they have similar problems. Um, I could say Map Four, I can see the, uh, the good points of that. But the way it's being presented now, I'm being forced to vote on all or nothing. So I will not be, uh, supporting the motion because of that. I don't su, support all the motion. My preference would have been voting on elementary, middle school, and high school. But apparently, this board is going down that roadway. We'll see when we take the vote. But the reason I'm, will not be supporting the motion is because it's all or nothing. And I don't think that's in the best interest of the community here. Um, if I could at this point, I would make a motion to approve Prop A. I'm, Prop A, Map A, but I can't do that until we get this other motion off the floor. That's it. Thank you.
Trustee Corio.
Thank you. And I want to thank the community that came out to speak. I know that many of you are my constituents, and I also, uh, met with many of you, uh, last week to discuss the maps. Uh, and we talked extensively, uh, about the additional considerations. And I agree with most of you, um, and actually, all of you that spoke today, and with some of my colleagues, the process should have been longer. Uh, I've expressed that we're being forced to make a decision based on the choices and the options that we have. I know that many of you are likely going to be very upset with me, because I don't think that Option A addresses the concerns with the unduplicated count that we've been looking at. And for the review of the numbers provided and it, for Option E, which, uh, I shared with many of you, that I was conflicted between Option A and Option E, uh, because of the divide. And I know clearly what my community wants. The 20 to 30 families plus the many of you that have sent emails and messages that have reached out, your request is for Option, uh, Map Option A with respect to the high schools. But I don't believe that it necessarily addresses an existing issue that we've had in our district, whether it's as a result of our previous boards, of our previous administration, is the allocation of resources and making sure that all of our students have an opportunity to succeed at whatever campus, uh, they are being, uh, directed to attend. And so, well, I would probably prefer to be able to have further discussion and extend, uh, further analysis and ensure that we were provided the transportation information, because that is something that I have been requesting. Uh, I don't want to, uh, have our students being in our buses longer. And, uh, the feedback that was provided by administration is that we can't do that until we have a decision as to the maps that the board is choosing. So that's, that's my further, my, my comment.
Trustee Kerfann.
Thank you, President Singh. So thank you to the Liddell community that came out tonight, um, and have reached out to us. Uh, obviously, there's a preference there for, uh, one of the maps, but that is not unanimous across our entire district. Um, what we did, I did notice is through all of the community discussion about maps and submitted maps for the elementary school pattern, all of it was focused on Map Two. That is where we find, where we have, you know, designed the, uh, Map Four, basing off that while, you know, removing the Liddell Annex, uh, taking consideration from the Gunstream maps, um, even pu, bringing those comments into account. Uh, what I do want, uh, people to be aware of is, uh, that community that was in the Annex, you know, I represent most of that area, and those students are already traveling a far distance to get to school and facing transportation issues. They traveled the same, just the same timeline to get to Roosevelt Elementary. Um, it's a little bit shorter, but it is just as long. Uh, this, uh, Map Option Four will alleviate that concern. And by splitting that Annex among the three nearest elementary, Steinbeck, Tilly, and Shields and Brawley, that will, uh, address the, um, time, timeline it takes to get to school, but also the unduplicated count as best as possible. And like President Singh said, we are currently splitting up communities. We're splitting up Glacier Point, uh, Middle School. Kids go to different schools, uh, after that. This, uh, proposal for Map F will, uh, create a feeder pattern for seventh grade through twelfth grade, which will be great for our sports programs and extracurricular, because it gives them a six-year timeline to build a sense of community and teamwork together. I also want to point out one discussion we have not, uh, talked about yet, but we'll probably mention a lot later in this board meeting, is student safety. Currently, Justin Garza has about 2,100 students. The maximum capacity is 2,500, but already Justin Garza is bursting at the seams. It is overcrowded, and we have had to address that issue this year by hiring five new liaisons, uh, to make sure our students are safe when they are at their lunch period. Um, one of the main reasons why I cannot support Map A is because it does nothing to address the overcrowding and therefore student safeties issue at Justin Garza. It creates, maintains the same population, whereas Map F does alleviate that population concern by splitting up, by bringing more students to Central High, uh, which will still be able to maintain its, uh, smaller feel that many, uh, Central High alumni, including myself, enjoy about Central High. And then finally, backing back to elementary school, Herndon Barstow is also going to be alleviating its overpopulation concern, uh, with this map number four. Um, we've heard a lot of complaints about that from the Herndon Barstow community, um, about it being crowded, and we've even possibly have to consider expanding the site and investing more money to build and expand, uh, Herndon Barstow if we don't find a way to adjust the student population. Um, and another benefit is that the unduplicated count among the three high schools will be less than 10%, which will make this most equitable map we have seen, um, in a lo- less than 10%, which will make this most equitable map we have seen in a long time for Central Unified. And in addition, for parents of younger kids in the elementary schools, a lot of them will be able to be maintained together if this motion approves. If you live in the Saroyan, River Bluff, or Liddell neighborhoods, they're all sticking together throughout K through 12, same as before. Thank you.
Trustee Sellers.
I'd like everybody to know that I hear you. The folks that I've spoken to personally, I've received your emails and phone calls. This decision isn't coming lightly. I'm taking it very seriously. As a parent myself of two kids within the district, I do look at them and I think of what's best for children their age and the mental health capacity or factor. I understand that, and I get it. That sense of community and everybody sticking together, whether or not it's for academics, for sports, or any of our extracurricular activities, that sense of community is important. And I've heard that from not only communities in the north part of the district, but as well as other parts as well throughout. I think everyone else here on the board's highlighted their thoughts and how they feel. I just wanted to reassure you guys that this isn't being taken lightly. We are putting a lot of thought into this.
If no other comments, Anita, can I ask you to have a roll call vote?
Trustee Correa?
Yes.
Trustee Chan?
Yes.
Trustee Sellers?
Yes.
Trustee Kerfan?
Aye.
Trustee Mailing?
No.
Trustee Cervantes?
No.
Trustee Solis?
No.
Motion carries four-three.
Thank you for all that participated in this. We move to item—action item M3, accept gifts to district. Assistant Superintendent Nick Ball.
Good evening. Administration is recommending the board accept gifts to the district as attached. As a follow-up, the donor will be receiving thank you letters.
Do I have a motion or questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Kerfan, a second by trustee Correa. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining, motion carries seven-zero. We move on to item number four, approve legal services for the 2024 to 2025 school year. Assistant Superintendent Nick Ball.
Administration is recommending the board approve legal services for 24-25 attached all the contracts for all legal firm that the district will be working with next fiscal year.
Question—trustee Correa?
All of the firms are increasing their fees. Was there any attempt to negotiate or have any discussions? I know some of them we use extremely frequently, and I understand the need for the services, but wondering whether we attempted any negotiations?
We weren't able to, so this is the court they gave us.
Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by trustee Sellers, a second by trustee Kerfan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining, motion carries seven-zero. Item number five, approve the 2024 school facility fee justification report and hold hearing to adopt resolution 2324-43. Assistant Superintendent Nick Ball.
Administration is recommending the board approve the 24 school facility fee justification report and hold hearing to adopt resolution 23 slash 24 dash 43.
Questions or comments from the board? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by trustee Sellers, a second by trustee Cervantes. Those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please say nay. Those abstaining, motion carries seven-zero. Last action item, approve preschool play structure renovation. Assistant Superintendent Nick Ball.
Administration is recommending the board approve the preschool play structure renovation. The project's expense will be covered by state preschool fund.
Questions or comments from the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Cervantes, a second by trustee Correa. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining, motion carries seven-zero. We move on to our information items. Item number one, receive information regarding public hearing and adoption of the 2024-2025 Local Control Accountability Plan, or LCAP. Assistant Superintendent Dr. Boatwright.
Thank you. So this item is coming tonight as a placeholder for the Local Control Accountability Plan. This plan will be available for public comment from June 10th through the 21st. Administration is recommending that this item be placed on the June 11th Board Agenda for Information, and then public hearing on the 25th and Board Agenda for Action. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Look forward to seeing the plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Information item number two, receive information regarding public hearing and adoption of the 2024-2025 proposed budget. Assistant Superintendent Nick Ball.
This is a placeholder for the fiscal year 24-25 budget. Administration is recommending this item be placed on June 11, 24 Board Agenda for a public hearing.
Thank you. We'll be returning next meeting. Item number three, receive information regarding resolution 2324-49 in the matter of calling a governing board member election. Superintendent Davis.
Thank you. In accordance with California Ed Code, board must pass the attached resolution known as the specifications of the election order, which identifies which areas have a seat up for election for the November 5th election process. We recommend that this item returned June 11 for action so that we can submit it by its due date, which is the end of June, to our county office.
Question or comments from the board? If not, we'll return this under consent? We move on to item number four, receive information regarding renewal of law enforcement service contracts. Assistant Superintendent Colleagin.
Thank you, President Singh, board of trustees. Central Unified Schools currently receive law enforcement support services through SROs in collaboration with our local law enforcement agencies. The attached proposals will renew the current support services for the term of 2024 to 2027. Under the proposed contracts, schools within the city will receive support from five Fresno Police Department SROs, and the school—Central High School in the incorporated areas for Fresno County will continually be served by the Fresno County Sheriff's Department. It's important to note that administration was in discussions with Fresno PD to add an additional SRO, which would make each middle school whole, having their own SRO. However, Fresno PD at this time was unable to staff one for the next school year, but is willing to review staffing mid-year to see if an additional SRO is available to be added at that current time. Feedback from our school sites and community have been in support of adding an additional SRO to the middle schools. The SROs work directly under the supervision of Fresno PD in collaboration with the school sites and district administration. The attached service agreements includes roles, responsibilities, and expectations for SROs, their agencies, and Central Unified School District as well. The overview of the fee schedule is provided for the board with the complete details of the financial impact. Fresno Police Department total cost would be to have the same services as we currently have, $997,173, and the Fresno County Sheriff's Department cost period for that three-year term would be annually $194,457, grand total of $1,191,630,000. To speak more on this item, I do want to invite Human Resources Director Alicia Oquara to discuss the options and the information inside the contracts as well. Thank you.
Good evening, President Singh. Good evening, President Singh, Vice President Correa, members of the board, Superintendent Davis. This evening, we are happy to welcome members of law enforcement agencies, specifically Fresno Police Department and the Fresno County Sheriff's Department behind me. They will be able to answer any questions that you may have at the end of the presentation. Tonight, I'd like to highlight the key benefits of having a school resource officer, SRO, at our secondary school sites by presenting a summary of the data we've collected during—regarding our SROs across their assigned middle and high school campuses. To begin with, the benefit of having an SRO at schools allows the sites to maintain safe learning environments, reduce threats to the campus, build positive relationship with students by serving as informal counselors and mentors, and allowing them to identify potential issues early and intervene effectively as needed. An SRO's presence on campus increases students' and staff's sense of security and calm. In addition, having an SRO at our school sites allows for quick responses when responding to emergencies or incidences on or off campus, and we've had them this year. It also allows the staff to work effectively together when conducting threat assessments and early intervention with students showing concerning behaviors and provide effective interventions. Now, to that end, we recognize that SROs play an integral role in promoting the safety and welfare for all of our students and staff members at the secondary campuses. However, we also recognize that our beliefs should be supported by data that demonstrates this point. To that end, throughout this year, Cassie Smith behind me, supervisor of campus culture and safety, and I have been in frequent communication, as well as conducting numerous meetings, including meetings with site administrators, with our SRO sergeants and SROs to review, analyze, and discuss key data points to help us understand how our SROs and secondary school site administrators can work effectively to ensuring a comprehensive and effective approach to maintaining a safe and secure learning environment. Now, with that said, a survey was distributed earlier this month to representative groups that included students, parents, and staff from each of our secondary campuses to gather feedback on the SRO program. A total of 233 total surveys were completed. 132 were students, 30 were parents, and 71 were staff members. Again, I just want to reiterate, these were representative groups that included school site council, English learner advisory council, site learning team, principal roundtables, student groups from principal roundtables, specifically the high school, ASB leadership, and students who experienced discipline-related events related to law enforcement involvement. So we try to include everybody. Now, based on the survey, 93.5% felt having an SRO campus—on campus is very important, including 70% of the students involved in disciplinary incidences with SROs. 94.7% said the SRO presence benefits students and the community, with over 80% of the students with disciplinary incidences agreeing. Areas for improvement included more drug education, classroom visits, positive recognition of SROs, and having permanent SROs at all sites, and top benefits including deterring threats, building positive student officer relationships, and assisting with campus security and emergency planning. Now, we also had a reporting tool that was developed a year ago, and it basically allowed us to track daily SRO activities per their contact roles. And the SRO reporting tool measures SRO involvement as related to the roles and responsibilities currently highlighted in the contract, and these areas include interacting and building positive relationship with students, serving as role model for students, supporting a safe campus environment, and responding to reports of on-campus criminal activity. Now, the SROs had documented an average of 11,500 positive student interactions, including but not limited to classroom visits and mentoring and other stuff they do, like going into elementary schools and talking to the students about just various topics. Now, what's interesting is that only 11% of the office referrals involved in SRO, which is really good. For those that did include an SRO, these referrals involve violence, threats, or substance-related cases, and we did look at the information very carefully, as can attest to some of the conversations we had with our principals about that, and it's been good. Now, the data shows SR involvement is proportional across student subgroups based on enrollment. But there's also the subjective data collection, the stuff that doesn't get measured in data. It's the things they do, the conversations they're having with students, the conversations they have with students in the elementary school. And they're here to provide any feedback that you may want, any questions you may have. So in summary, the data highlights a critical role that our SROs are—the role they play. I like to say that they've participated in safety videos, meetings, home visits. They've done a lot, and I can say that. So, to that end, I want to thank you for your time, and we'll open it up to any questions that you may have.
Thank you. I think we have some public comments. Clerk Kerfan?
Yes. Our first comment is from Nynfia, and Monica Munoz will be on deck. And you'll have three minutes.
Six minutes for translation.
Oh, thank you.
Buenas tardes, miembros de la Mesa Directiva. Soy madre de familia de estudiantes del Capitán Miroscu, y estoy preocupada por los estudiantes y el personal, por incidentes que ha habido. Quisiéramos obtener reporte a nivel distrito de incidentes. Saber si ha habido resultados de tener un SRO en la escuela. Qué impacto ha habido y qué beneficio el tener un SRO en la escuela y qué mejoras ha habido. Quién es responsable de que ellos hagan su trabajo? Podríamos nosotros como padres reunirnos con el SRO por si tenemos preguntas, de preferencia al comenzar el año escolar? Nos gustaría siempre ser notificados cuando hay incidentes en la escuela. Saber si puede el SRO patrullar alrededor de la escuela pues es donde pasan muchos de los incidentes. Si podríamos tener un liaison más en el capitán ya que no tenemos un oficial de tiempo completo. Sé que como padre nosotros somos responsables por nuestros hijos, pero nos gustaría también pedir su ayuda. Gracias.
Good afternoon, board members. As a mother of a student in El Capitan, I am concerned for the safety of the students and the staff for several incidents that have happened. We would like to get a report from the district level about these incidents. We would like to know if there have been any positive results about having an SRO at the school. We would like to see what is the impact and what are the benefits of having an SRO in the school, and what improvements have occurred. We would like to know who is responsible for the work that they do. We also, as parents, would like to meet with the SRO in case we have any questions, preferably at the beginning of the school year. We would like to get notified when there are incidents at the school. We would like to know if the SRO could patrol around the surroundings or the areas of the school, which is where the students spend a lot of times and these incidents happen. We would like to have an additional liaison in El Capitan since we don't have a full-time SRO. And as parents, we know that we are responsible for our children, but we would also like to ask for your help. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next comment is from Maria Munoz, and Laura Bolton is on deck.
The other way around, Maria is going after her.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes, miembros de la Mesa Directiva. Soy padre de familia del capitán. Quiero expresarles mi preocupación acerca de la seguridad en la escuela debido a que han habido muchas peleas y acosos escolares en un solo día. Hubo siete peleas. En una ocasión hubo un incidente en donde un estudiante suspendido estaba fuera de la escuela esperando a otro estudiante, y sacó un arma de fuego amenazando a varios estudiantes, entre ellos estaba mi hija. Y en otras dos ocasiones ha sido amenazada para ser golpeada por un grupo de estudiantes. Tengo una hija en la preparatoria central high school y la otra en la secundaria El Capitán. Capitán, y les pregunté si ellas han visto al oficial de policía en los pasillos y en la hora de la salida o en la hora del recreo. La niña de la preparatoria contestó que sí. El oficial platica con los alumnos y algunos hasta saben su nombre. Hay comunicación. La niña de la secundaria, El Capitán, contestó que no, que como dos o tres veces lo ha visto. Muchas gracias.
Good afternoon, members of the board. As a parent from El Capitán, I would like to express my concern about the safety of the school due to several incidents and fights and harassment that have occurred in the school. As an example, on one day only, there were seven different fights. On one occasion, there was an incident where a suspended student was waiting outside the school for another student, and he pulled out a firearm, threatening several students, my daughter among them. And on two other occasions, my daughter has been threatened to be hit by a group of students. I have a daughter in high school, in Central High School, and another one in El Capitan Middle School, and I asked both of them if they have seen the police officer at the halls or at the exit time or at recess time. My high school daughter answered yes, that she has seen this officer, and she has seen several students even talking to the officer, so there is communication. My middle school daughter answered no, that she has only seen this officer two or three times. Thank you.
Thank you. And up next is Laura Bolden.
So, I'm here to speak about the input that I've received from the Central Unified Teachers' Association membership, from our educators at El Capitan and also at Rio Vista. They've been reaching out all year long with their concerns about safety and about the increases in fights and about the difficulties in having to split and share an SRO. Rio Vista has had major increases in fights, and especially in fights that are very violent. And I know that a larger share of the time for SROs has shifted at points in time over to Rio because of that, leaving El Capitan without SRO coverage when they also need it. Rio Vista has had teachers who've been injured. A teacher had her cochlear implant knocked out, and she was knocked to the floor when a fight erupted in her classroom. We had an administrator who was injured and out on medical leave for some time from a fight. We had a liaison that was hospitalized due to being involved in breaking up a fight and was out for quite a long time on medical leave. El Capitan has had teachers that have been injured. It's just a really difficult situation. Adults on campus don't know what to do in order to protect the students and themselves. And I know that having a full-time SRO doesn't solve all those problems, but having them split between two campuses does open us up to having less resources when they're not there. So, I would really like to encourage the board to, please don't put this on the consent agenda. Please put this on the action agenda for the next board meeting, because you've heard from parents from El Capitan, and I think that after this meeting, when people have been watching the YouTube video and they realize that this is on the agenda for information, that you'll hear from other parents and other community members, other staff members, both from CSEA and from CUDA, and possibly from admin. I've had administrators say we would like to have a full-time SRO. We brought this to the safety committee this year and requested that we do whatever we could to try to bring on additional SRO support mid-year, and we were told to wait for this, to wait for this agenda item for this contract to renew. So, I understand FPD can't give us another full-time SRO at the moment, but if we could have our contract open so that that could happen as soon as possible, maybe not even mid-year, but when it's possible, that would be appreciated definitely by my bargaining unit for sure. Thank you.
Thank you. President Singh, I have no further comments at this time.
Trustee Cervantes?
We do have a caller.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Hello, Saul Samora. You have three minutes on the clock. Make sure you turn down your listening device so we can hear you loud and clear. Again, you have three minutes on the clock, and your time starts now.
Yes, this is Saul Samora. I'm a counselor at Glacier Point Middle School. I'm also a grandparent. I have to just thank the Fresno Police Department for the work that they do. Part of what makes Officer Brisco effective at Glacier Point is that, you know, he serves a role as a problem solver, a mentor, and a law enforcer when necessary. I'm heavily involved in the threat assessments, light-speed alerts, and from time to time, we do high-risk interventions that require, the only one that has peace officer status on campus, and that's Officer Brisco. And we work together on many of these high-risk interventions. And part of the concern that we have with El Capitan and Rio Vista is that you don't put one school at disadvantage when you split an SRO. Part of what makes Officer Brisco effective is that he's proactive. The fact that he's there full-time allows him to be proactive, and as a result, his interactions with children have lifted him proactive interventions. And one example I can tell you, that a young lady walked up to him and told him, "I don't feel well. I'm in trouble," and provided a knife to him and said, "I need help." And that led to a successful and safe intervention. And again, that's what part would make some success was that he's proactive and that does an excellent role as a problem solver, mentor, and law enforcer when necessary. I really would encourage you to work closely with the Fresno Police Department and get our colleagues some help at Rio. What allows us to shape and maintain positive school climates is the ability to be proactive, and Officer Brisco has been instrumental in doing that, and I just wanted to thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Trustee Cervantes?
Thank you, Board Chair. Question to the cabinet would be, what would be a Plan B? So, obviously, they don't have the resources to put another officer on campus. What is your proposal to be able to address that issue? And maybe perhaps we can hear from the boys in blue to hear, maybe they have some reserve officers or somebody that we might be able to find some additional resources.
Yeah.
Or, and women. Excuse me. Excuse me. That happened.
I was watching everybody push that button, so I wanted to make sure I was the person that didn't forget to do that. To answer, first of all, thank you for allowing us to be here and speak. And before I answer your question, if I may, just for a moment, I was really, it was really impactful to listen to some of the results of the survey that was done and how important the program is to not only the students and the safety, but just overall the school district. And I think that that survey really spoke volumes, and I was glad that we got to hear that. To answer your question, sir, as far as an actual Plan B, so I just spoke with Chief Baldorama earlier today about this specific issue, because I knew that I was going to be here tonight. And believe me, we've all heard loud and clear how important it is, not only to the school district, to the parents, to the students, to have that sixth officer, because we all recognize that splitting an SRO between two schools is certainly not efficient. There's a lack of consistency, and we lose out in that situation. The reality is, is that right now, we, as you're probably aware, in the city of Fresno, are facing a budget shortfall and coupled with some contractual obligations that we have as a result of some grants, most recently the organized retail theft grant that we're received, we're obligated to put officers regarding that grant towards that. And every time we dedicate an officer to a contractually obligated position such as SRO, that pulls from patrol resources. And I realize that one position in the grand scheme of things may not seem like a lot, but when you're struggling with daily staffing levels, it is. But I want to ensure this board that the chief is committed to adding a sixth officer, and he has made that very clear. He is very confident that by January, up 2025, that we will be able to do that. That's not to say that something couldn't change in the meantime for the better sooner. We just couldn't reduce that to writing, to commit to that, not knowing what the current budget and staffing situations are going to be. So, in terms of a Plan B, we don't have reserve officers or additional resources that we'd be able to allocate, but I can convey to you and to the parents and everybody else that's spoken today that we are committed to making sure that Central Unified does get that sixth officer.
Does the cabinet of the school district have a Plan B until we get to that point?
Trustee Cervantes, the first thing we do is reevaluate your safe school plan and then look internally to potentially reallocate some resources in the interim and prior to that sixth officer arriving potentially. Expansion of liaison services, administrative support.
Any other security type of measures we might be able to take?
Outside services haven't been considered for that. I think internally, we could use options that could help as a Plan B in the interim. I think it's first looking at what current resources we have, their safe school plan, like I mentioned, see if we could adjust some things.
Thank you. Trustee Creo? My apologies again, ma'am. My apologies.
Trustee Creo, then Trustee Sellers?
Thank you. Following up on Trustee Cervantes's question, the current contract before us is for a term of three years, correct? Is that the same length of our last contract? A lot of my questions are for administration, so.
Yes.
Okay. Three years ago, maybe 2021, maybe 20, probably 2021, Chief Baldorama was at a board meeting, and the same concerns about not having an additional officer were shared. He, again, I don't remember his words, but I know he promised that we would have an additional officer available. Here we are, three years later. We are renewing a contract that is going to cost us much more money for what I believe are the same services, and we are hearing the same promises and the same concerns from the community, that there are safety issues, we're having a lot of fights, and everyone on this board is very well aware of that, and that's not unique to our district, unfortunately, but it's an issue that needs to be addressed. So, while I appreciate the comments from the representatives from the Fresno City Police Officers, we need to act. Our district needs to have a plan. We can't continue to rely on promises of having an additional officer. I also think, I think the majority of the community and many of you are aware that I'm not a proponent of supporting SROs. I think there's a lot of issues that need to be addressed and a lot of improvement in the training and the interactions. I'm glad to hear that there's some tracking of data. I have some questions about that as well. But we need a plan that addresses the needs of our schools now, the needs that our parents are sharing with us, with the fights, with the firearms being displayed outside of our campuses. I'm not sure that I was aware of such an incident. One of the questions from the community members, the first mother that provided us the comment in Spanish, one of her questions was, is there an opportunity for parents to meet with our SROs before the start of the school, of the academic year, to discuss what their concerns are and to understand what are the roles and duties of the SRO? So, that's my first question. My second question is that we have the contracts for both the Fresno County Sheriff's and Fresno Police Department with the city of Fresno. Were these contracts translated to Spanish?
The first question you asked is, yes, we could certainly arrange time with our parents and community to work with our administration and our SROs at the start of the school year. Yes. The second question is, no, I'm sorry, they were not translated into Spanish.
Okay. So, to that second question, can one of you share what the roles and responsibilities and the duties are of the SRO that haven't been highlighted? So, we heard about the positive interactions, we heard about responding when they're called for in certain incidents. Is there more details? Because I know we have an interpreter present, and I know we have the families that we're asking. Can we have a little more detail about what the roles and duties are, please?
Yes. Mr. Coiar, can you please come to the microphone? The contracts on both the SRO and Fresno County Sheriff's Department has responsibilities and expectations set forth for district and for the SROs.
And will you share that? Will you also share who their supervisor is, who they respond to?
Yes. To the last question, as far as the SROs for Fresno PD, they do respond to their sergeants behind me. Our sergeants are Sergeant Anthony Alvarado, Sergeant Eric Gia, I don't believe he's here, and Sergeant Justin Bell. So, we have three sergeants that they work with. And also behind me, I got a chance to meet our new lieutenant, Lieutenant Adam Baldonado over here behind me, and then we have Sergeant Stephen Supacith. Excuse me if I didn't say your name correctly. Yeah. So, they are the sergeants in which I believe Deputy Joseph Reese responds to. And then we also have our sergeants, our officers, Officer Sheila Chandler, Officer Quentin Brisco, Officer Daniel Fink. We don't have Officer Ashley Alvarado, and then Officer, well, he's not here, Obi Agboa. So, they do respond, they do communicate with the sergeants in regards to their line of communication. Then from the sergeant, they work with Lieutenant Larry Bolin for the Fresno PD, and Lieutenant Larry Bolin works with Captain Robert Beckwith. Did I get that right? Okay. All right. As far as the roles and responsibilities per the contract, the contract identifies three areas in which we've agreed to work on, which you can find in Exhibit A, Exhibit B, which basically, specifically under Exhibit B, you have SRO responsibilities, you have the Fresno Police Department, you have Central Unified responsibilities. And I can tell you that, you know, we really made a concerted effort to collect data to really determine where do we need to get better. And I know I've worked closely with Cassie, and our sergeants can testify that I've been pretty much a stickler with Cassie and Mr. Collegian to kind of make sure that we're examining that data, because data is what drives decisions. And our biggest concern was that, you know, we want them involved, but we want them involved in more positive interactions, and they took to heart that. And I believe because of the data, they've been able to really make some really key adjustments. But that's in general. So, if there's more specific questions, I could wait for the question.
Would you like me to read? Read the, was that your ask? I wanted to clarify.
For a summary, I think it's a matter of, I know where to find them, and I can read English, but I don't know how, what the English ability of our two parents that spoke up and our many other parents. And I know that at Capitan specifically, we've received comments. If you, even if it's not reading the list, but generally summarize, what are my expectations as a parent as far as an SRO on campus?
Absolutely. Let me cover a few of the bullet points that currently in the agreement, they're similar to the sheriff deputy contract as well. Seek opportunities to engage in positive interactions and build relationships with students. Track positive interaction with students. Participate in informational sessions with students, parents, guardians regarding the roles and expectations of the SRO. Attend cultural proficiency and restorative practice training provided by Central Unified. Be present with school staff, parents, guardians in conflict resolution involving students, and becoming familiar with pending disturbances and work with students to proactively intervene to conduct what would lead to be enforceable actions such as arrests or citations.
Thank you. Mr. Coiar, while you're up here, thank you, first of all, to our entire administration and our staff for collecting data. I know that that was something that I was very vocal about. I know that that was something that I was very vocal about last round of this contract. You talked about, I think it was 132 students that responded to the survey out of the 233 participants?
Yes.
How many students do we have between our middle schools and our high schools, just generally speaking?
I don't have exactly that number, but I know we have, how many? About 6,500, yeah.
Okay. That's concerning to me, because one of the things, at least in the two rounds, I think this may be the third round since I've been a trustee, that this contract comes forward. It's clear that the adults always feel safer when there's an officer around. I don't share the same feeling. I am concerned. There are varying opinions related to that, and I always worry about the lack of input that we're receiving from our students who are specifically interacting. I'm glad we're having 11,000 positive interactions, but what about the negative interactions? Whether that's in response to a fight, in response to a citation? I'd be interested in having the complete data. I understand, and I'm not blaming any of our SROs, so please don't misunderstand my questions and my critique of our lack of response and action and plans, but I'd be curious to know that information. So that if we only have 132 of our students responding, so that I may reach out to other students or collect more information to have a better understanding of how our students feel, because that is concerning to me. There was a comment about our staff, particularly our teachers, not knowing how to respond, and I think I missed under what circumstances. But do we provide training to our staff as far as how to respond to fights or incidents that would involve our SROs or our law enforcement in general? Because it's my understanding if our SRO is not available, we still engage law enforcement services, right?
Is the training in specific to how to engage in or break up fights or be a part of that safety measure? Because some of those things don't include SRO intervention if it's, you know, conflict between students where, you know, other administration or other staff have to separate students.
Yeah, that, and then also, if I'm a teacher, when should I expect to involve an SRO? So I think one of the things that I hear, and it was just very briefly shared by President Bolton with respect to her constituents, but that's something that we've heard before as far as, well, I don't want to break up a fight for my safety, and I understand, I have my opinions, but I understand that that may be the response, but every time there's a fight, do we engage our SROs? Every time there's any disciplinary action? And the more frequently we engage our SROs, if there is a violation of the penal code, there's going to be a citation or there's going to be an arrest that impacts our students, which is why I'm concerned and would like to know, in addition to the positive interactions, what are those negative interactions or citations or, you know, sending a student to juvenile detention or things of that nature?
I think to answer one part of your question, I'll try to get to the other ones. I think in the event that there's any evidence or potential crime that's occurred on campus, any adult on campus can reach out to the SRO or school administration to report the crime. And that essentially would have to be looked into. Recently, it was probably a few months ago, we provided a training to the district leadership team on how to respond, you know, whether there was a physical altercation and what the involvement would be of staff. We provided a training and also kind of a best practices document that was pushed down through the school sites that was shared with the site leadership teams as well. But in essence, when the involvement of SRO is necessary, it's purely based on whether there's a crime that's occurred or not. Most fights on campus don't include SRO involvement because it's something we believe administration can handle. However, there's extenuating circumstances sometimes where other potential assaults can occur that does require their intervention. So I think the best way to answer that is case by case, but in most cases, in just general physical altercation between students, it's something that administration could definitely handle without the intervention of SROs.
I would request, if head administration, Cease Fit, or superintendent, that we have those discussions with our staff as a whole, so that they understand when they can expect to involve an SRO and when our administration needs to be expected to respond. Our principals, our area administrators, if a higher level of response is needed from our district office, because I think that's critical and important. My final question for today, and I am asking that this item return under action. There's been an increase in the cost. We're now going to pay close to a million dollars for police services. If I remember correctly, I think the last contract was 535,000 or 550,000 dollars. That's a lot of money. Did we attempt any negotiations? I understand the cost and the increase of, I'm very well aware, I follow MOUs, I hear and see all the things happening. Was there any discussion or attempts?
There was discussion, there was attempts. This essentially covers their wages, their medical benefits, and cost of vehicle. Yes.
Okay. And I lied, sorry. This will be my final question. Or I guess reiteration of the first comment and question from Trustee Cervantes. I think we need to be more proactive in developing a plan, because this cost is only going to continue to increase. I hope that the fights and incidents that we're seeing on campus decrease, but in the event that they don't, we need to be able to respond. And I do want to point out one other thing. If I remember correctly, with our, the sheriff's contract, we have some legal obligations to provide certain resources to some of our students that are on probation, I believe, right? Is that still the case? And do we, do we have any similar obligations with the city of Fresno?
Well, in regards to, are you speaking of like youth court probation department? We don't have a contract with the Fresno County Probation Department at this time.
Okay.
Is that what you're referring to?
I recall that during the last round, and I'll go through and thoroughly review.
We did have an arrangement with probation previously, and now the probation officers assigned to students are tied in there. We don't have a kind of middle layer in that process. That was removed the last round.
Okay, thank you.
There's still probation officers assigned to students in Central Unified they still have to work with, however, independent from us having a contract with them.
Trustee Sellers, and then Trustee Correa.
First, I'll thank Trustee Correa for asking most of my questions, but how many SROs do we currently have?
We have six. We have five with Fresno PD and one with Fresno Sheriff's Department.
Okay. Is there specific requirements or training to fulfill SRO duties?
I think I would like to refer to Sergeant Alvarado.
Good evening, Board President, trustees, and Superintendent Davis. So the training that we have for the SROs, there's several. First is the basic SRO school they go to. So that's, that's a curriculum put on by SROs from throughout the nation, actually. They come in, they'll talk with the SROs about a framework, blueprint, how to onboard different curriculum, engage with students, anti-narcotics, mental well, mental health, overall physical safety for the site. From there, we do twice a year, active shooter threat assessments and trainings for response. One's going to be our training center, you've been there, actually. Yeah, so we have a training center and a school site response. Next, we do a restorative practices. With all these fights, kids having issues, difficulties with one another, we're trying to bring them back together, repair that relationship in some way, shape, or form. That's where we use that with the school. They also do cultural proficiency training. That's looking at trying to have a lens that could be more receptive and proactive to today's day and age of students that may be struggling, being able to have a healthy environment, and trying to be with students in a proper manner. We also have 51-50 training with the Central Unified we did this year, and that's kind of, we have our own training we do already, but to kind of collaborate and work with the school district to let them know what we're working through and also see what they need help with. So we're kind of on the same page. That's also what we do.
Okay. Kind of segues into the next question then. As far as vacancies, our SRO calls in sick, uses their vacation time, things like that, how do we backfill that spot?
Was that on a single day vacancy? You're talking about the current language that's in the contract?
Yeah.
So that's a, that's a good question. So that's an actual change for this contract. In the past, we had, for instance, an SRO calls in sick that day, we would then just, I want to call it randomly assign a patrol officer from patrol to cover the school for that day. What we realized in conjunction with the, with the school district is that really doesn't benefit either side. It certainly doesn't benefit the school, because that officer that is then covering that school really has, has no buy-in to the students, isn't familiar with the students, isn't familiar with the staff, isn't familiar with the procedures. So what we talked about in these negotiations is something that we felt would be better, which essentially is working out a coverage plan between either the sergeants or the current SROs that are in that area to cover for a single day. Any absences that were to extend beyond a single day, then we would get a more of a long-term replacement. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, a little bit. If we have a sergeant backfilling for the day, is there a, the contracted rate stays the same, or is there an adjustment because we're paying a sergeant's salary versus an officer's salary?
No, there's no adjustment there.
My next question is, during our summer breaks and all of the holidays that the school district enjoys, how do we utilize your services during those time periods?
Well, I can, I'm going to ask Sergeant Alvarado to come back up, because I know he just, we just went over this, and he'll be much more thorough than I will, but I know there's a lot of events and a lot of things that they're doing in addition to summer schools and other things, but I'm going to let him cover that.
Okay.
Yeah, so we try and set up different opportunities, like we're talking about with that cultural proficiency. So like one of the opportunities we have was a, we call it the hero camp. So it's trying to engage any geared toward females, but males also, feel free to come in. But any females who have an inclination toward law enforcement are invited to come out to our training center and learn about law enforcement. Our last one, we had about 128 females come from out the county who wanted to check it out. We also are looking at trying to have an open gym situation over at LCAP, trying to have kids engage with officers, which is also an opportunity to engage with the parents. So we're looking at those different ways to try and get that look, engagement, and just overall interaction. Yeah, so and then we also provide overwatch and safety. As schools are empty, there's still athletics going on, still students there, so we try and provide that safety look also.
Okay, so we do continue to utilize your services during that?
Yeah, absolutely. I believe Rio has a literacy camp in the summer. We're going to be present at that, just trying to be available to the students throughout the summer for summer programming.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
My next question, kind of, continue on what Trustee Correa had mentioned, that, you know, the way our district operates and we have, you know, policies, we prefer to have our liaisons engage first or our school site administrators engage first. Can we get a specific breakdown of how many times our SROs have had to engage with students in criminal behavior during this previous contract?
So we do have the data that would be discovered in our student information system in Ares. I don't have the exact number for you, but I do know that the number of referrals, office referrals that they were involved in was very low, but we can get you that more specifically, that data.
Okay. I'm looking at it, and I mean this in no way as a dig towards our officers, but if we've tied your hands and, you know, there's only so much that you can do, are we kind of, do we have a false sense of security? That our parents think that our kids are safer because there's a police officer parked out front, or our faculty think that they're safer because we have officers on campus, but we have created policies that tie their hands that they're not allowed to engage? So I'm kind of curious and concerned about that. That's my last question. Thank you.
Trustee Correa.
Thank you. I guess I have just one question for our Fresno Police Department. Sounds like you guys know from our community surveys that a lot of parents and staff and students from Central Unified want there to be another SRO at our middle schools that you guys don't have the funding for in our city budget to allocate. Is, are similar cuts happening to other school districts such as Fresno Unified? Are they also losing a middle school SRO?
The short answer is no. And you say cut, so just to be clear, no SROs are being cut. This was a request to add a sixth officer that we're to Central that we're just not able to do at this time, but absolutely none of the SROs that we provide to Central Unified, Fresno Unified, Fresno County Office of Education, or Sanger Unified are being cut. Everything is staying the same there.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other questions at this time. My fellow trustees have asked more than I can think of. I just want to say that I think our, thank you for our SROs that are here tonight, and while I do believe that SROs are a critical and necessary piece of student safety on campuses, they're not the only tool in our toolbox, and I think as board members and administrators, we do have to think of public safety and student safety as a whole and find, you know, other creative ways to address the instances of, you know, student safety or lack of safety that are happening in our schools. Thank you.
Trustee Solis.
A lot of questions were asked. My number one question would be to the board. If you look at the Fresno PD contract, you're seeing in Exhibit A, roles and expectations of a student resource officer, and also Exhibit B, its responsibility of a school resource officer. This is negotiable. Do we want to request administration to meet with Fresno PD and discuss these two items? Maybe add to it, delete to it? I don't know. Along with that, you can also ask the administration to look into the options to having a full-time Fresno PD officer at LCAP. What other options are there? Could we subcontract for a period of time with probation, so when the officer is not there, we have a probation officer there? Could we do away with the PD officer and contract with the sheriff's department to pay a sheriff's deputy to be there? They definitely would have jurisdiction. I don't know if they have the will to do that, but it can't hurt to ask. So my first, and I'll yield to the board, is there any interest in discussing Exhibit A and B?
Trustee Correa, then Trustee Correa.
Thank you, Trustee Solis. I'll pose your question back to the Fresno Sheriff's Department. Is that something you guys even have jurisdiction over to bringing SRO to a campus within the city limits of Fresno?
So LCAP is Kansas City of Fresno, we all know that, right? So I think we have that.
Can you join us at the mic, because the people that are watching remotely can't hear you? Thank you.
So as I was saying, we would have to have a discussion with the Fresno Police Department, figure those, figure those things out. They have to give us permission, I think, is what I'm, what I think's going to happen. If they agree to it, then we'll come to you guys, we'll speak about contracts and negotiations and money and all that good stuff, and then we'll, we'll go from there.
and money and all that good stuff, and then we'll, we'll go from there. But it's probably something that could happen, but we'd have to speak with the Fresno Police, our counterparts and figure that, figure all that out. I hope that answered your question.
Yes, thank you. And yeah, I wouldn't want to step on Fresno Police, Police's toes, but if that's something that you'd be interested in, pass it back to you.
I'm fine with it. It was never my impression that the decision was going to be made by anyone in this room. The sheriff speaks for his department. And I really don't think the sheriff is going to request from a police department what his jurisdiction is. There's going to be a legal discussion with that. But that's fine. I mean, he, he gave you the right answer. The sheriff's going to decide that. I'm not saying that the sheriff is going to agree to this. I'm just saying, we definitely got to know if we don't ask. That's my response. Do we have a response to my other part of the question is, is the board interested in looking at Exhibit A or B? We can either add or delete any of those items with the understanding it will be a three-way meeting in my view, some board members, administration, and Fresno PD. Fresno PD, since they're going to be part of this contract and say, we don't want to do that. So where are we with that?
Jake?
I saw Trustee Creo's hand.
I think that was a similar question that I asked during the last contract. Of course, I'd be more than happy to have further discussions. My first request for Exhibit A would be to have specific examples in more detail of what it means to support a safe and campus environment. All of these bullet points are very broad and, except for serve as role models to students, although I'm sure there's still room for debate as to what that means, I think there can be some consensus. But all the others before we can engage in having a discussion as to what we want our SROs to be doing, or if we want to require more or less, or engage in discussions to negotiate whether we can require more or less, we have to understand what this means. What is the timeline? Usually the response is, we don't have enough time, this needs to be done by a certain time. So what does that look like? And is this conversation even feasible? I remember the last conversation when Chief Baldurama was here and I was asking questions about negotiations and some of the training required. Their hands are tied. They also have an MOU that they have to comply with. So the room to negotiate is small if not at all existent. So I'd like to hear.
I'll, I'll have to get back to you on timelines. I think before the school year's out, we definitely can have continued dialogue with both law enforcement agencies because frankly, the exhibit you see there, the exhibits in both contracts are similar. And both district administration and law enforcement administration have collaborated and agreed on the, the proposed language that's already in the exhibits. So i-if it's something we need to continue dialogue on, I, I think I'd have to have more time on our hands to see what that looks like for us and see what their timelines are. Unfortunately, I can't fully answer that question right now.
Trustee Solis?
And if my memory, memory serves me correctly, which I think it is, Ms. Creo, you have brought up these concerns that I know of at least two times. And the response from both the police department and administration were, they're going to start up a program where they're going to track those services. Along with that, we were told as a board that information, that data would be brought to us at the time of the contract renewal. Here we are again, looking at a contract, and all of a sudden, it appears that people have amnesia about bringing that data forward. So I don't know how many contacts ended up in an arrest of a student because the information that I told, was told was being collected for your benefit and mine, hasn't been presented. Some on the other side asked the same question. We have been told that, I know of at least two times by this law enforcement agency and administration, they were going to provide us this information at contract renewal. I'm sitting here at contract renewal without that information.
Sure. Superintendent Davis?
A couple of things I'd like to add to. The data you summarized can be provided for the board. The information that was gathered, that you provided in summary format, having access to that, both positive and negative interactions, what's been tracked within the, I'm going to call it an app, but into the system, is, is in response to the conversations that have been held. So that's one step to be had. I'm, in terms of the timeline needed to discuss the language, if there's certain parameters that you as a board want to, you know, ask within our work, then that's going to dictate the timeline. We have to go back to the team and, and they have to tell us because I, I believe they run all the contracts through legal before we get it and can bring it back. My hope would be if that is a priority, that we can get as clear of guidance from the questions that you've asked or the discussions specifically, as was just mentioned, we'd like more specific information on these bullets or something in more clarity so that we don't take so much time that the officers are assigned somewhere else. We, we want to make sure that we enter into a contract in time to have the coverage that we need over summer break. And so, so if there's clarity or direction from you as a board on that, that would be helpful on either A or B. The last thing that I, I do want to add is in addition to what Sergeant Alvarado was sharing in terms of the questions about training, I'm very thankful in response to the last meeting and discussions about the additional training around cultural sensitivity and response and restorative practices and that we be frontline. Anytime I've asked the team to, hey, can you attend this countywide workshop with us? So we're going to be getting information on safety reviews. Or as was mentioned, we're doing suicide prevention response training for all of our staff. Can we get on the same page with you? It isn't in their training and they're still showing up and going to that. And so I think that's been a, a great addition to, and I think in response to the information they heard the last time this was discussed, was that was a critical piece. And I don't know that they did justice to the fact of how much of that training they're now going to, per our ask, to, to make sure their team is well-aligned with, with our response team. And so I, I did want to make sure you had that information as well. So if there is something specific in A or B or, or some direction you want us to go, we will absolutely go back and work towards that. And if there is an issue as to whether or not it can return to the next item, we'll, we'll inform you of that, that information.
Trustee Solis?
Is there consensus on the board? Since nobody wants to ask, I'll ask. Is there consensus on the board to create a subcommittee to look at Exhibit A or B? Yes or no?
I think clearly the board spoke up and asked for a Plan B. Clearly several people amongst the board, so I think the consensus has already been decided.
Use your mic.
At the beginning of this conversation.
So I'll take that as a yes?
Yes.
Okay, fine. That being said, just for the record, I'm not against school resource officers, but I have a certain philosophy that guides me through my decisions. One of them needs to be made clear as far as anyone in this room, I don't give blank checks. When I authorize something, I want to know what I'm going to get for it, whether that's a toilet, a sink, whatever. Services, I want to know what I'm going to get for what I'm paying. If there's any questions and I don't get my answers answered, to me, there's only one way to vote. That's no. With that, I will say I have attended numerous meetings at LCAP. The parents there has, have expressed to me their concerns that they want a full-time officer. Whether, I think somebody asked a question here about, is that going to actually make them any safer? If there's a, a police officer sitting in the front, front parking lot, it's going to make maybe 20 feet around that patrol car a little safer. I don't know if it's going to make it any safer in the back of the campus, to answer that question. But that being said, it doesn't make any difference. The, the parents have overwhelmingly said they want school resource officers. So I'm going to do my best to get them what they're asking for. Thank you.
So I think Superintendent Davis had asked for a point of clarification. So the desire is a, like an, like an Adcock Advisory Committee of the Board or, or of the, of admin? I didn't quite hear the question you were posing to me.
Yes, I think there's multiple ideas coming around. One idea was a revision to A and B, which then we have to turn to our partners to see timeline for legal review before the contract comes back. In terms of Plan B and what that Plan B looks like, we'd be happy to bring that back to the next meeting or, or when it returns as an item to discuss what the options would be for a lack of service in certain areas. We absolutely are working on that. That wasn't the scope of necessarily the presentation of these contracts, but we do hold it in our responsibility to make sure our schools are safe and that we have a mechanism to address mental health issues that need a referral or altercations where families are requesting the services of law enforcement for those. So that Plan B to me is a different conversation that is our expectation and commitment to return to. Clarification I need is on Exhibit A and B, as was discussed in, in terms of language change. That involves more than us internally.
Trustee Creo?
So I, I mean, I would like, of course, I always want the opportunity to revise a contract and provide my own language for recommendations. But in order for me to, to do that and to consider the feedback that we've received from the community, I would like information about the surveys, information that was obtained, the numbers of what I consider, since we're talking about positive, the negative interactions, meaning anything that, that resulted in a citation, in an arrest, in a detainment, some more formal action by our SROs. I'd also want a list to identify what these broad bullet points mean. What was administration, and I, I mean this politely, thinking or what was the plan or the goal in having those responsibilities? What do you want to accomplish? But I also know that I'm in the minority when it comes to these contracts. So if there isn't a majority consensus, or a consensus from the board, you know, I, I vote and I ask the questions and continue to request the information as a due diligence and that's all I can actually do. So I don't know how everyone else. Ultimately, what I would be more interested in is eliminating the SROs and having a different plan that still addresses the safety concerns, the disciplinary issues that our students are having, and where our staff still feel safe. But I understand folks feel safe when they see officers in uniform, and I can't, I can't change people's minds about that. So those are my points about how we proceed, at least for, for my vote.
Did you, were you, sorry, were you going to share something Superintendent Davis?
How about we bring back to the next meeting some more specification on the questions that have been asked, including what is Plan B when the department is unable to, given this contract, you don't see that sixth officer? So what does Plan B look like? That's additional conversation, further than the conversation that's been started with both of the principals at those schools and the staff of those schools that needs to be had. We'll bring that back to the next agenda item and we will do what we can in terms of the clarification of A and B and try to stay on course for, for returning it to the next meeting. If at that time we've been unable to answer questions, we will also have the question answered of, what if we need to go further into it? What does that mean to our contract and our covered services over the summertime? Because that isn't something that we could be answering live, but we can prepare to bring that back.
And, and, and just, just so there's, I haven't understood even for the board. So there was a proposal for initially, at least in terms of the verbiage used, as I understood, Trustee Solis was, a, a subcommittee of board members. Is, is that still the proposal?
Board members, administration, and whoever's contract.
So, so would that be like a working group that would be proposed?
Yes, I think, or the request that the superintendent create a committee or a group and invite no more than three trustees.
This is clarification, committee of superintendent or committee of board? Committee of board, we would need to take action and I then would request, if not a committee of superintendent, that we bring a summer contract for coverage for services. We're opening our aquatics, we're opening, we have a robust summer program, and this timeline we're talking about will definitely impact. I mean, summer begins in, in a, end of June. So I mean, we have contracts through June. So if, if it is a committee of the board, we would post agendas and hold public meeting. If it's committee of superintendent, we would return with information and advice from that group. Just need clarification on that.
Any opinions on, on the board? Trustee Solis?
Whatever would be more efficient and facilitate. I think for me personally, it's the point of addressing some of these concerns and, and having some clarity. Because this has been brought up now three times by various folks on the board and our administration and also representatives from the police department, the city, Fresno's Police Department, I do want to point out that services offered over the summer is at the discretion of the city. Those are not guaranteed. That is written in this contract. Let's see, subsection C, I think in the, the agreement, it says the very last sentence there. I lost it now. Oh, I'm sorry. Subsection A, the last sentence, "When school is not in session, the assignment of SRO officers and sergeant shall be at the discretion of the chief of police." So if that's something that we're concerned, then I would like to see some language revised there where we have that authority because that's concerning. It's up to the chief of police, based on the staffing concerns and issues that they have. They have the discretion under this contract whether or not to provide those services.
So to your initial question, the most efficient to me is a superintendent committee. And if you guys can provide three or fewer individuals who would like to meet with Assistant Superintendent Clejine and, and team to have some discussion around and input to this, in addition to providing you all with some of the data as was shared, that would be my desire. I think it is more, a more efficient approach and still provides the feedback you're seeking.
Initial volunteers from the?
I'd want to serve.
Okay. So we have three so far? All right, so we have.
Right.
So far, yeah, just checking to see if, if anyone else was still interested. So we have Trustee Sellers, Trustee Creo, and Trustee Mailin.
Sure.
So the commoner question is, can we appoint an alternate in the event that one of us is unable to participate? I see no objection. If the three of us will commit to notify the superintendent, if we're unable to attend, she can reach out to the rest of the board members to see who is interested in attending.
I'll, I'll be your alternate then if you guys can attend.
So we have our three in?
So I saw four.
Hands.
Which three?
So the ones.
Trustee Creo?
Trustee, Trustee Mailin, Trustee, yeah, Creo and Trustee Sellers with Trustee Krefan as the alternate.
Thank you.
All right, thank, thank you, thank you all. We move on to item number, information, item number five, receive information regarding online benefit enrollment platform. Assistant Superintendent Nick Ball.
The district would like to renew the online benefit enrollment platform contract. Based on the proposal, two companies met the requirement, B-Swift and Benefit Solver. Staying with Benefit Solver means no rate increase for next three years. However, switching to B-Swift will require setup fee for additional $74,000 and fees to remain the same are not guaranteed in the following year. Administration is recommending this item be placed on June 11th to renew for board agenda for action.
Questions or comments? Trustee Creo?
So I know that these are the two with qualified proposals. Do we receive feedback from the end users as far as the preference over one or the other as, and then considering that as well? When we then consider whether they're qualified or what's in the best interest of the district?
I know we shared the information with our benefit, Health Benefit Committee. That was, information was shared.
Okay.
Yeah.
No other questions, just in the interest to allow us to hear more feedback from community and end users, I'll place that under action. We turn to item number six. Receive information regarding the sale and disposal of surplus obsolete district property. Assistant Superintendent Nick Ball.
Attached is a list of surplus and obsolete items that the district would like to sale and dispose of. Administration is recommending this item be placed on June 11, 2024 board agenda for action.
Trustee Mailin.
There's a lot of laptops on there. Have we considered giving them to not just underprivileged kids, but anybody that, any families that could possibly use them?
I think the laptops, the tech department dual assessments. And three things they look at, the hardware not supported, software cannot be updated, and the equipment doesn't work properly. So it's not, it's kind of just e-waste.
Superintendent Davis, one more?
If I can add, I believe part of the process, once it is declared obsolete, is to allow that to be available to individuals that want the item.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Then we'll turn under consent. Next, number seven. Receive information regarding Resolution 2324-48 regarding dedication of easements to City of Fresno, AT&amp;T, and PG&E for development of Shields and Brawley Elementary School, APN 511, 322-22, portions one. Director Rodriguez.
Thank you, Board President and Board of Trustees and Superintendent Davis. Attached for your information is Board Resolution 2223-48 for the Shields and Brawley Elementary School project. The resolution contains public easements that are necessary to be either dedicated or granted pursuant to ED Code 17556 in order to open the school. These easements allow public utility companies to continue services without interruption and are required by local ordinance such as the City of Fresno easement. The city will, with the City of Fresno, the city will not approve or allow any kind of connections to the stormwater, water, or sewer despite the associated fees being paid without a street easement. The grant easement for PG&E is necessary for power distribution to the site and surrounding neighborhood. The overhead transmission lines around the school are required to be underground where they did not exist before. The grant easements for AT&amp;T is necessary to continue communication services to nearby, communication services to nearby dwellings. The easements are necessary to complete and occupy the school. Administration is recommending that this item be placed on the June 11, 2024 board agenda for public hearing and action. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Trustee Sellers.
With the proposed easements, is there any other options or proposals? Or this is kind of it?
This is it for the City of Fresno, PG&E, and AT&amp;T. There are still some other communication companies still kind of lingering out there. I'm still trying to navigate with those agencies. And then obviously, if another easement is required, then we'll go to legal and make the final adjustments and bring them back to you.
So if it's not approved, everything stops?
Everything stops, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
If, if no other comments, then we'll return back for public hearing and then action. Next, item number eight. Receive information regarding bid awards for Justin Garza High School Athletic Complex, increment number two project. Director Rodriguez.
Thank you, Board President, Board of Trustees, and Superintendent Davis. On May 1, 2024, the district opened bids for the Justin Garza Athletic Fields, increment number two. This particular increment number two includes, but not limited to, service yards, toilet buildings, bleacher installation, press boxes, concessions, ticket booths, concrete work around the championship soccer field, maintenance, maintenance building, scoreboards, a baseball batter's eye, and a few flagpoles, to name a few. Pursuant to Board Policy 3311 and Public Contract Code 2000, that require agencies to award public works contracts to the lowest bidders. And please see your attachment to find the bid combined result amounts which were in line with what was anticipated. I would like to mention, though, that in your supporting documents, the tabulation sheets are all of bids received for the project. The bid awards represents all of the lowest responsive bidders that we were recommending to return to the board to award. What's not on the bid award sheet is JG, which is Justin Garza -9, which is the mechanical package. We currently have a protest on the mechanical package, but does not hinder the schedule currently. Administration recommends that the Board of Trustees return this item for award of the bid packages to the lowest apparent prime bidder for this project on June 11. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Trustee Sellers and then Trustee Solis.
Yes, can we get a more detailed list of explanation of what the bids packages actually entail? I'm looking at, it says masonry, steel. What part of the project these are going to? And just more detailed over.
Yeah, we can do that.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Trustee Solis.
On the opening of the pool, your staff took us on a tour of some of the football fields, some of the soccer fields. And I just want to say that your staff's done a great job overseeing that. The place looks beautiful. I've been to colleges that don't have facilities like that. So thank you for your work and please pass it on to your team.
I definitely will and thank you for your support.
If no other question, just based on the information that Trustee Sellers has requested, we'll have this returned under action. Next, receive information regarding CO number 01 for the Shields and Brawley bid packages 1, 2, 6, and 8. Director Rodriguez.
Thank you, Board President, Board of Trustees, and Superintendent Davis, for your information tonight or change orders in the attachment summary for each item for the multi-prime contractor packages on the Shields and Brawley project for your review. The change orders are necessary for work and not included in the original contract's scope of work and are necessary to complete the project. Again, like I mentioned before, if you look at some of these, we have errors and omissions by this particular architect. We've notified them and obviously we'd be going back and negotiating some of this. Staff has reviewed and recommends approval of this item to return for action on June 11, 2024 as a board agenda. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Trustee Sellers.
Can you confirm which architect is the one that drew these plans?
So this is PBK Architects. However, they have a multitude of consultants, the civil, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, they have all of these.
So they all fall under the PBK umbrella?
Yes, umbrella. Yeah, that's typically how it is. Yes, sir.
Trustee Creo.
So to the point, the vendor or company we would be discussing recouping any of the change orders that were a result of inaccurate drawings would be PBK Architects?
Correct. So everything ties back to their master agreement. I think I mentioned that before. So we're currently in discussions with them on the aquatics athletics. They've been more than kind of in agreement of what the district has to say. And so I feel confident that they'll, they've already stepped up the game and I feel confident that they'll.
When can we expect, and by we, the board, a summary of what that recoupment was? Because I know this is not the first project.
No, so I think the last time I think I mentioned to you was kind of late April, April-ish, I would come back with aquatics. We're currently wrapping that up. So as soon as we get the opportunity to actually meet, we've been meeting every, twice a month. But we need to, since these projects are wrapping up, just to kind of accelerate that, those meetings and discussions.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, you're welcome.
Can we have this item returned, Director Rodriguez? Not, sorry, not this item, but the, sort of the request has been sort of an ongoing kind of list of all the different change orders and especially the number that have come due to drawing errors. And generally, what is the timeline for the recoupment of these type of fees?
So my staff and I have been engaged with them, but you know, there's, these projects are still currently going on. So, and they have other commitments as well as answering a lot of RFIs and reviewing the submittal process. So it's trying to get that time to meet together. And usually when we're together, we're there at least two or three hours. So I will bring this back like per project. I think that's probably the cleanest way we can do it and then we can kind of present that to the board.
Just as a clarification question, PBK was also the architect for Justin Garza High School, meaning in terms of the project, the project as we currently have it. Not some of the additional incremental sort of projects that we're talking about.
So you mean the main phase?
Correct.
Yes, sir. You are correct.
I think also understanding what was the timeline for recouping some of those fees would help us have a more kind of historical perspective about our engagement with this particular vendor and what was the timeline in terms of recouping some of these fees getting back to us.
Yeah, we, the aquatics one should be, I can probably end up giving that to you rather, probably in the next couple of weeks, kind of project it when we can bring that back.
That would be great. And if you can do it for the main campus as well, because you have everything, at least that, I think that would help us understand what is usually the timeline in these conversations with them as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
We, so we will have this returned then. Is there, under consent for this particular group of change orders? Number 10, receive information regarding change order to bid packages 5, 6, 9, 12, and 13 of the Justin Garza High School Aquatics Complex. Director Rodriguez.
Thank you again, Board President and Board of Trustees, Superintendent Davis, for your information tonight or change orders in the attachment summary for each item for the multi-prime contractor packages on the Justin Garza Aquatics project for your review. Again, the change orders are necessary for work, not included in the original contract's scope of work and are necessary to complete the project. Staff has reviewed and recommends approval of this item to return for action on the June 11, 2024 board agenda. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have on this particular project.
Trustee Kerfond.
Hi, one of the bid orders, I think, change order number 12, mentioned addition of two fire smoke dampeners at Building M. Can you tell us more about why, maybe why we need two more dampeners? And if there is a safety concern currently without them?
No, it was missed from the drawing. So it's a requirement to have those smoke dampeners, the fire requirement. And that Building M is the motor room or mechanical room for the aquatic center.
So without these two dampeners, is there a current danger to letting people be in that room?
No, they've been installed already.
Oh, so the dampeners have already been installed?
Mm-hmm.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
If no other questions, we'll have this returned under consent. Thank you, Director Rodriguez.
Thank you.
We turn to advanced planning.
Attached, no changes.
Thank you. Additional information, any closing comments from any of the board members? Then with that, a reminder, oh, Trustee Kerfond.
Just congratulations to all of our seniors graduating next week or the next two weeks.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
And thank you for Ms. Howerton's class, too, that allowed a couple of us to come join today. A reminder, our next meeting, the next regular board meeting will be held on Tuesday, June 11, 2024, at 6:00 PM for closed session, 7:00 PM for public session here at the Central Unified School District Office in this room now called Room 13. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have a motion by Trustee Creo. I actually heard that Mr. Sellers, Trustee Sellers this time. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining, motion carries 7-0. We end at 9:25 PM. Thank you.